I just wanted to let you all know that we're just starting in a few minutes. There are quite a few people that joined the original, um, the original meeting invite, and we're just waiting for them to all figure out, um, that they need to join this current meeting. But I appreciate everybody's patience while we try to get as many people joined as wanted to participate, but we'll be starting in just a few minutes.
Welcome, everybody. Good evening. We start this, the public hearing this evening from the Committee on Finance. I'm gonna start off by, um, begin the process. We're gonna have the city clerk talk about some technical aspects, and then we'll talk about how we proceed with the public hearing itself, with the rules and engagement. So first, I'd like to do, we start the meeting, it's June 9th, 2020, Tuesday. It's the Committee on Finance Public Hearing. Madam Clerk, can you, um, call the roll?
Kevin Lee Fielding.
Present.
For the Chair and the Line.
Present.
Anna McCarthia.
Gracias.
Anna McEary.
Gracias.
The Chair.
Yeah. Thank you, madam. Um, next, what I'd like to do is have Mr. Clerk, could you please, um, explain or elaborate on some of the technical aspects of this evening Zoom meeting?
Sure. Um, thank you, everybody, for your patience. We are very delighted today because we increased the capacity and added wish to a different platform. The government would need more room, so we give you the opportunity to provide. I mean, today, um, on, and so, seriously, and I believe so, morning to our neighbor sound, the bottom of the dial up, the button, hit a toolbar, and click on Participants. When you bring up Elizabeth, it's been, um, if you click the Ray and Hand button, um, we will be able to see that you're interested in speaking tonight. If you're not intending to be a Zoom, you're just calling in via telephone, you don't have access to-
I'm sorry, we can't hear him. Mr. Chairman.
No, that muted only, oh, no, I need that, that's the only mic we have, sorry. Um, if you're, if you just are calling in via phone, um, you can send a text message. If you don't have access to the Ray and Hand button that pops up underneath the name when you click on the Participant button, you can send a text message to 401-400-1682, and we'll also put you in the queue to speak tonight. Um, and so now I will turn it over to the Chairman and let him, um, discuss, um, explain how the process will work this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Um, I'd like to also, next is Kenny Severini, the City Solicitor on the line. Down, bottom left, following her. Yeah. Kenny Severini, are you on the line? If you're not, oh, why don't you text me? Okay, we have the right number there. While we're waiting for the City Solicitor, what I'd like to do is talk about the public hearing. It's a public hearing, um, that we're gonna be listening, um, to the public, to give them opportunity to, um, follow their views on the proposed, um, City of Providence Budget Tax Levy and Spending Plan. Depending on the number of people that's growing, the way the process will work is I will go down the list, if anybody has their hand up, we'll have an opportunity to speak. We'll start off with, I will give each person, uh, three minutes to speak, and then if it does blossom that all multiple hundred plus choose to speak, then we're gonna have to make the, uh, make the time allotment a little bit lower because then we'll do, we'll be talking all the eight to ten hours. I wanna make sure everybody has an opportunity. So, we'll start off with three minutes, and then we'll have the, now speak, the identification marker that's on the right side of the board. Give it three minutes, give it to you, and then when your time is up, if it's over, then you'll be unmuted, and then I'll go to the next person. I ask everybody to be succinct. Also, I ask that if they're a group to organization, and all have a similar system, if you appoint maybe a spokesperson, a spokesperson, multiple, and they can talk about the different views, and a lot, this way you can be more efficient on what you're thinking. Also, this is not a question answering, public hearing, this is simply a hearing for the public to give us, give the council and the city its feedback on the proposed budget. With that said, has the City Solicitor joined us yet?
Yes, sir, I'm here.
City Solicitor, for the record, could you please state to the public and for the record, um, why the City Council Committee on Finance can conduct a public hearing on this, on this Zoom webinar?
Due to, uh, due to the pandemic, uh, COVID-19, uh, pandemic, the Governor, by executive order, has suspended the Open Meetings Act requirements, uh, which would mandate the body be held, the session be held, uh, in person. Due to the Governor's, uh, executive order suspending the Open Meetings Act requirements, we are allowed to have the meeting conducted via Zoom, so it is perfectly consistent with the Governor's order.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Severini, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Um, then let me repeat myself. Madam Clerk, we're gonna move to the next stage of this hearing. Can you please, you know, read into the record items one, two, three, and four into the record, so we can begin the public discussion. Madam Clerk.
Number one, in the ordinance amendment, order number 330, chapter 29, statute 83, adopted July 9th, 2019, 50% tax collection of 2019 taxes, and a sum not less than $321,826,548, and not more than $357,984,569, 8 days on 100% of 2019, statute 2020, fiscal year tax collections, setting the rate of fiscal year 2021. Number two, an ordinance amendment of chapter 29, statute 84, number 337, approved July 9th, 2019, ordinance of the City of Providence, making this go for eight, of $377,169,494 or cents, for the 6th amendment, new statute of 2020 as amended. Number three, an ordinance established on a compensation plan for the City of Providence, and repealing ordinance, statute 2019, statute 110, number three, parade of police for number 26, 2029, as amended. Number four, ordinance establishing the classification of the natural numbers of employees and the numbers of employees of certain classes in the fifth department, and repealing ordinance, statute 2019, statute 111, number 497, approved for number 26, 29, as amended.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I also want the record to reflect that we have President Gino Matos present. We have, um, President Boatem Correa present. We have Council, Councilman Salvatore present, Councilwoman Kerwin present, Councilman La Fortune present, Councilwoman Miller present, and, I think I, I never, oh, Councilman Pedro Estranel present. Also, the treasurer is present, embodied, the internal order is present, um, at this time, and the Chief of Staff is present. That, I run, if I, did I miss any council members? None. Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Anthony, do you have a question, or can I just speak?
I do, we're, we're not able to, yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The council people are unable to start, to show their, um, start their videos. Is there a reason we're being prevented from doing that?
That I cannot tell.
Okay.
The Clerk is working on that as we speak.
Yeah, I can answer that question. This is a, this is a new host ID that we're using, and it has some studies, so I'm trying to enable that, if you're able to let me know that he is not-
He's working on it, Councilman, and she slowly but surely, there you go, we see you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sam, Mr. Sam, you're in the meeting. I'd ask, the one thing, I'd ask everybody to bear with the Clerk, the Clerk, they're doing the best they can, they, uh, they expanded and changed, uh, expanded the, uh, capacity, and they're working on the technical aspects, and doing an excellent job, just so everybody can bear with them, that's all I ask.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, this is Mr. Mancini, I'm having the same difficulty, I'm not able to access the video.
Thank you. And then I think I see the definitely majority.
Thank you, um, Mr. Chairman, I'm joining you tonight, good to see you guys.
Great, I'll do the record.
See you, I'll be there later. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie, thank you. Okay, and the Clerk will continue to work out that aspect of the difficulty. Um, what I'd like to do is begin with, as I can see as you're moving along, uh, the public hearing process, in fact, taking testimony. Um, the first individual will be providing testimony, Mr. Larry Mancini. But I'd like, let everybody understand that when I acknowledge you, please say your name to the record, and if it's you or for City, your position and your address, and then your three, and then the three minutes will begin. If you go past the three minutes, you will be muted automatically, just be aware of that, okay? Mr. Mancini, you have the mic for three minutes, sir, please identify yourself and information to the back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Lawrence J. Mancini, I am the City's Chief Financial Officer, and Mr. Chairman, members of the Finance Committee, thank you for this opportunity this evening, and, um, I'm here this evening to speak in support of and on behalf of the budget ordinances that are presently before the Committee on Finance, and part of this evening's public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 21 budget. Mr. Chairman, as you and your committee are aware, the administration, on behalf of the Mayor, Mayor Lozep, has filed a proposed budget on April 28th, and was received by the council on May 1st, and then referred to this committee. Since that date, the administration has come before the Committee on Finance and has made presentations of the various departments. During this time, we have reviewed revenue and expenditures of various departments, and we have been governed by the process that is generally afforded to the administration. The budget as submitted was predicated on information known to the administration at the time of the submission. Strictly this is still, there is still more information and more important work to continue, particularly as we await further information that relates to federal and state revenue appropriations. What is, however, clear, Mr. Chairman, is that the proposed tax levy as submitted was based upon values as of December 31st, 2018, and was a levy that was submitted with a no-tax increase, and we continue to support that, as I trust the council does as well. With that said, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, it is my recommendation that we support the adoption of the tax levy, when we move to the committee, uh, the meeting on the rise, as proposed, and that will allow the city to stabilize its cash flow with the receipt of timely tax payments on the new tax levy. I wish to thank you and the Finance Committee and the entire City Council for your consideration of the budget process thus far, and I look forward to the continued completion of our important work ahead. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
Mancini? On the list is, and it's just the one name, it says Anna, A-N-N-A. Do we have maybe some phone number or something I can at least identify, help identify? I have an Anna who's asked to be, to speak. Anna, are you there? All right. Anna, are you there? Okay, well, we'll move on to the next one, we can connect with Anna, we will, the next person is? Let me see, I can't see the whole name, Timothy, Timothy Simmons.
Hello.
Ms. Simmons, are you present, is that Tim Simmons, Tim Simmons, did I stand right?
Yeah, yeah, Simmons speaking.
Great, perfect. Mr. Simmons, you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. Um, well firstly, um, I'd like to say that I really fucking hate-
Well, I guess, I guess that's it for that, this time. Move on, Mr. Clerk. Do we have a Jack Lanza, Jack Lanza?
Hello, um, yeah, um, Jack Lanza, uh, resident of Providence, and I've got a complaint, why the fuck are you guys raising the fucking taxes? Spend the money on better mics, you- And the-
Yes, sir? Okay. Thank you, sir. Next, we have, my name is Kathy J. Johnson.
Hello, this is Kathy Johnson, I am, I'm a Providence resident. Um, I believe that we should, um, defund the police, and we should be, be putting more money towards Providence Public Schools, who are currently, um, facing a state takeover and are having a $4 million cut in their personal budget that is cutting staff that we desperately need right now.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, thank you, thank you for participating. Next, I have a Pia Munoz.
Rino.
Sorry?
Rino.
Munoz, is Pia Munoz present?
Uh, hello, hello, hello. Hello, can you-
Pia Munoz, yeah? Have the mic.
Am I good?
Yep, you're on, you're on, you're live, sir.
Okay, fine. My name is Pia Munoz, I live on 101 Lester Avenue, and today, I would like to talk about why, why we should put the taxes towards, towards like, the, towards like, public schools and that, because with all this George Floyd- Like, with all this stuff going on, like, why can't we just, like, poor George Floyd, bro, like, there-
I can't, I, um, I don't think that, I mean-
Okay. Mr. Munoz, can you give the answer?
And I muted him, I mean, he's the one that has the phone, I see.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, so, I was saying, like, with the George Floyd, everything with George, we should put, like, the money towards, like, public and bars and stuff like that, you know what I'm saying? Like, 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 people-
You can just say, we can't. I'm sorry, sir, we can't deal with the background noise, we're gonna have to move on.
Next, I have, who do we have next, Brian Peterson? Okay. Next, Mr. Brian Patterson. Mr. Brian Patterson, are you there, sir?
Uh, hello? Uh, my, my name is Brian, I live in 1541 Public Swerve Drive, District 3, in the great state of Tennessee, and I used to work in a-
I mean, do you wanna keep him going?
Uh, excuse me, can I continue?
Yep, new, Mr. Patterson, you have three minutes.
All right, I used to work in a local supermarket until I got fired, and the reason will shock you. It was an absolutely ridiculous and disgusting reason. My employer was fined a huge tax because he- Publicly, we- Unreal. Hear me, we could- And fuck this county.
Turn him on. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes. Thank you. Councilor, Councilor, hang on one second, please.
All right. Should the Clerk really reemphasize, uh, what the purpose of the meeting is, so that people don't get confused?
Thank you, sir.
I think, excellent. I think we have, we told them it's on the budget, and it's a public hearing.
And it, and it's a great opportunity to stress, uh, whatever difference they had with the way that budget is being handled, uh, but to take it to that level is just really a waste of time.
Well, I, I recognize that, Councilman Estrinol, I, we have to keep rolling along, and everybody who has, who has their hand up at this time, the public hearing-
I understand.
That's helpful. So, we'll do our part, and we ask, what I'll ask everybody, who has their hand up, who's asking to speak, if you could, we understand, some people may be angry, some people may not be, I'd ask that the people that use, you know, hopefully appropriate language, hopefully be respectful in your, um, statements, and, um, hopefully be productive. Um, this is about the budget for the, facing the City of Providence, and looking for constructive statements or, uh, ideas that can help the people of Providence. And I feel it too, you know, uh, you know, all due respect, not use inappropriate language at this time, if, and to remain, uh, inappropriate, uh, that, you know, remain and use respectful language. President Boatem, did you want to say something, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I have to agree with, uh, you know, my colleague, Councilman Estrinol, and as well as, uh, you know, the words that you just said as well. I mean, I'm here on this public hearing, I'm a public servant, and I wanna listen to what everybody has to say, but I want everybody to be polite, respectful to everybody, uh, all races and whatnot, and I don't, I don't think this is, uh, acceptable, this type of, uh, language and, uh, behavior. Clerk could monitor it and kind of like, cut this off, uh, before it gets out of hand. I, I mean, I don't wanna participate in something like this at all. This is, this is what I'm here for, and I got a record to do, to listen to this type of language, uh, from individuals.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to ask the City Solicitor, uh, that if this continues, if it's within our legal rights to actually terminate the public portion of this hearing.
I, Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? City Solicitor? Mr. Chair? Yeah, City Solicitor, I can hear you, can you hear us?
Okay, I, I think we have to conduct the hearing, but, I mean, of the, of the five calls that you've taken, all were inappropriate and filled with hate and racist language, so I think at some point we should, uh, conclude the meeting if this behavior continues.
Chair, may I say, may I have a word?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give you the la, give you the last word, because I think point that we get to the public hearing, so no questions, the process, Councilwoman La Fortune.
Chair, I actually think that if, I think that we've had enough, and this is in addition to the, the comments, the racist, anti-Semitismist comments, there's also, um, or questions, so-called, there's also comments in the Q and A that are incredibly offensive, um, and, um, inappropriate. Um, and so, and I think with everything that's been happening throughout our nation and within our communities, this is an awful time to have to deal with this. I, I really don't wanna hear the N-word again, and I don't wanna see another compliment from a racist person being posted. None of us deserve this, and I understand we're, we are public officials, we sign up for this, but I think we also have to take a stance when, when people are behaving in this type of manner for us to shut it down.
Councilwoman, I think we all agree that the language that's being used so far is extremely inappropriate and unfair to everybody in this process. I agree with you wholeheartedly, and it's sad that instead of having constructive conversation or ideas for our proposed budget, folks are choosing to use this as a form for hate speech and inappropriate language. But we're gonna try to do our part, and if, uh, utilize inappropriate language, our, the Clerk will let him immediately mute, and I'll move on to the next person. On the other end, I know there's probably newest people over here who've been waiting will probably want to speak and wanna give their inappropriate manner, and I wanna make sure I give them that opportunity also. So, we're gonna, we're gonna keep moving along to see how it, how it goes, and the Clerk will mute people who use inappropriate language. So, I'll go to my next person, I think is, is it, is it Okama F? Okama F, are you on, are you available, Okama F?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here, thank you.
So, I'd ask, I'd ask you just appropriate language, and you have the mic, sir? You, you have the mic.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, my name is Os, Okana Zimbabwe, and I would like to talk about the tax levy and why we should, why we shouldn't support it. The tax levy is going to be used to justify hookers and cocaine, because it's gonna-
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, this is Councilman Salvatore. My recommendation, Mr. Chairman, is to receive guidance from the Governor's Office, the State, uh, the Department of Health, and the Mayor's Office, in conjunction with the City Council, to move forward with a traditional public hearing. This is absolutely ridiculous. Nobody should be subjected to this language and this hate. I understand that time is of the essence, and I appreciate that, however, it is not fair to the public and to the members of the council to have to sit through this, this hate after everything that we've been through. This is, this is completely unacceptable. My recommendation is, shut this down, and let's come up with a better solution. Thank you, Councilman Salvatore, to be noted. I'm going, next I have on the list, uh, Nancy Hery. Nancy Hery, there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, thank you, committee members and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about this year's City Council Budget, which is a core responsibility of this committee and this council. More generally, this committee and this council have a paramount responsibility to protect the viability of the city's finances in both the long and short term. I observed a portion of last week's Finance Committee meeting concerning the unfunded pension liability, in which this committee stated once again, it is a serious problem the city has to address. I was pleased to see the council engage Franchel Monte. He advised the Taveras Administration during 2011 to 13 to craft reforms that reduce the unfunded pension liability by $170 million. As the committee discussed that night, the number shifted since that time when the city changed actuaries. However, the savings that we achieved at that time through the support of the majority of the City Council resulted in $170 million in actual savings. This was very hard work, but it showed what can be done with determination and focus. At last year's hearing, I suggested to this committee that the city had the opportunity through the revaluation to allocate additional funds to the pension, which could help correct for shortfalls in the city's annual contributions, uh, recommended by the actuary during the period of 1996 to 2010. While I respect the council's decision to reject that particular policy suggestion, the failure to do anything at all is not an acceptable substitute. Instead, I respectfully submit that it is this committee's responsibility to take this urgent problem seriously and develop a plan to address it. There are alternatives, but they become more difficult the longer the City Council lets this problem fester and get worse. This year's budget may not provide a lot of room for action, as was present last year, but there are still opportunities to do something. The ultimate question any elected official has to answer to the voters is this: Are we better off today than we were four years ago? For my first term on the City Council during 2011 to 14, the answer was yes, we reduced the unfunded pension liability by $170 million. For my second term during 2015 to 18, I regret to say the answer was that we, through our inaction, left the city worse off by failing to do anything about the mounting unsustainable payments. This term's City Council and this term's Finance Committee still has two and a half years to do better than last term's City Council and last term's Finance Committee. For the long-term well-being of our city, I urge you, please, to make the most of this opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. And, uh, Mr. Sir, can you state your, your address, are you in Providence, right now?
Sure, I, I reside at 330 Groado Avenue.
Thank you. Next. Hang on one second. Uh, is Nico Page there? Nico Page?
Yes, can you hear me?
Nico Page, yes, can you please state your name to the record and your address, and you'll, you'll have, you'll have, you'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Nico Page, I live at 99 Sheldon Street. Um, I, like many others, have been following really closely the news and participating in the recent protests in the city, and learning a lot about police brutality. As such, in recognition of the fact that I am also new to abolition work, um, I would mostly, will be reading, uh, the words of others, but I would like to use my time to advocate for defunding the Providence Police. First, I'll read part of a statement, um, by Charlotte Abatsi and Black and Pink. Both in the present and historically, police forces have been ineffective at keeping local communities safe by perpetuating the oppression of residents or people of color, undocumented, mentally ill, disabled, and L2BTQ+. The Providence has received a $700,000 grant to formulate a behavioral health response team, that amount does not stack up to the nearly $90 million proposed police in 2021. I'll repeat, $90 million. The current budget proposed- The current budget proposal has allocated a hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred fifty dollars on guns, and I mean, it's been-
I've only been called thirty-seven times.
Who, I don't know, who said that? Um-
You, sir, something, something-
Alright, I don't know-
You still, you still have, you still have the, you still have the mic.
Okay, um, one million dollars, four hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred twenty dollars for fifty new police recruits, and nine hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-six dollars for uniforms and quote-unquote "wearing apparel", presumably including more of the officer riot gear that is currently being used to suppress peaceful protests. And I would like to ask the city council to just imagine, um, what could happen to the city and this amazing state if we were to advocate, allocate those funds to, um, initiatives such as, um, low-income and public housing, education, and resources for formerly incarcerated individuals. Um, there are a number of organizations that have already been working hard at things like these in Providence, um, including, um, Dare and Black and Pink. And, um, I would also like to direct, um, the council to the Eighth Abolition Platform, eh, which was formulated in response to the Eight Can't Wait campaign, because I believe that many of the reforms that, um, have recently been proposed, um, across the-
You have one minute.
Thank you, across, um, the country will actually lead to bigger police departments, like body cams and, um, more training actually only allocates more funds towards police. And we need to be allocating those funds towards things that will, um, prevent, um, the need for a police force that is abusive. Um, and so, from the abolition website, I will say that addicts policing is a system designed to help hold oppression. One thousand people are killed by police every year, and black people are murdered at three times the rate of white people. Um, the only way to prevent the murder of innocents by, um, the police is by defunding them.
Nico Page, your, your, your time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Let's try it. Evan, uh, Schooner? Evan?
Hello, am I good? Am I good?
Well-
What's the name, name, address? Name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Evan Schooner, I live on one oh one Malik Avenue. And I would like to say, like, about, like, how we can use the tax funds. And like, we can use the tax funds, we should lower the tax funds of the police and use the, more like reasonable things, like education, giving, giving people in prison more education, education, and help rebuild the city. Because without it, this can go hayward, and we don't wanna never, like, big outbreak, like, like, what's going on right now in the real world. So, I'm suggesting, like, and also, and also, like, we should use more, like, on, like, for example, like Ryan said, like, the one, the one who looks, like, Miss, uh, what was I saying? Sorry, sorry about that, like, Mrs. Puff, like, we should use the money for hookers and-
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I think we should, as Councilman Salvatore mentioned earlier, I think we should, I think we should definitely have a public hearing, we should add an exception, right?
Councilwoman, this is not a free call, hang on a second, please. Alright? Uh, next we have, is it Jackson, um, excuse me, is that Jackson Lawson?
Jackson Lawson.
Is Jackson Lawson on the line? Okay, let's move on.
Tennessee's back.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? Thanks, what's it up? I, 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 I have heard the calls, I recommend that we shut it down, either reschedule or rethink how we proceed to comply with the public hearing requirement. Uh, I will, I have been in contact with the solicitor, and I suggest that, um, if we shut it down right now, we'll reschedule and come up with an alternative. Uh, this is absolutely ridiculous and totally inappropriate and insulting to all the good people that have decided to partake in this, um, public hearing.
Mr. Chair?
So, um, I recognize the city solicitor's statement. I'm going to keep it on the public hearing. It's imperative that I guess we get to this, and then we get to the meeting on the rise, so I can address the levy and move it out of committee. So, um, there, unfortunately, sometimes, in order for the greater good, we have to soldier on through, unfortunately, um, trying circumstances. I am concerned that, that the, um, levy will be in jeopardy, the city's ability to, the council to get it up and out and vote on it, and we'll lose more time on this. Um, it's very, it takes many days to post a public hearing, and therefore put the tax levy in jeopardy. I ask my council colleagues to, unfortunately, uh, bear with this, uh, this matter, um, but the public hearing is still moving forward at this time, and I duly know the city solicitor's statement. Like, the timetable and the financial health of the city in jeopardy, if I can, if I reschedule this public hearing. We're gonna keep going.
Councilor Chair, with all due respect, we're giving people a platform to perpetuate hate and racism and anti-Semitism. And I under, and I, and I understand, you know, trying to keep this mo, moving, but how much, how, how, how much more do we, do we, and also the people of the public have to hear this? This is out of control.
Woman, this is not a discourse, this is a public hearing. I'm sorry, I recognize your, your concern, but at this time, I am not gonna jeopardize the city's tax structure and the ability to get the tax bills out. I recognize that. Unfortunately, we have folks that do not wanna participate in a respectful manner. Whether we do it tonight, tomorrow, or a month from now, unfortunately, we'll have the same similar individuals potentially looking to disrupt the process. So, I ask all the council colleagues, until you are recognized, you do not have a right to jump in, this is in the middle of a public hearing. Thank you. Next on. So, who, who do I have left? I have Alisa Bishop. Alisa Bishop? If I'm saying that right.
Hello? Yes.
Hello, Alisa Bishop? Say your name and where you live, and then you have three minutes, please.
Uh, my name is Alisa Bishop, I live at twenty-five Tyler Road. Um, I wasn't planning on speaking, I was, I was hoping that there were enough, um, people who were gonna be on this call to be being productive, but I think that customality so far speaks to the unease that is kind of the undercurrent of where we are right now. And, you know, I, I would really understand that, that this is really only going to get worse. So, I know that the budget was initially crafted and obviously, um, proposed in something, I, I don't remember what you said, April twenty-eighth, but I would really love for the committee to understand, given the context, you know, what can be reallocated, where we can start to, to challenge ourselves, to really move forward and think about what is inflexibility, how do we start to understand, given this unrest? I mean, we spent the past, what, thirty minutes, look, listening to terrible language, um, racist language. Um, you know, this is a real problem in the country and in Providence. And so, trying to understand, and, and, and I would hope that the committee challenges themselves to understand, you know, what of that funding that, that's, you know, penciled in right now? Whether that's ten thirty-three funding, whether that's funding for new equipment that, you know, potentially could be new riot gear against some of the peaceful protesting that I've seen, whether that's, you know, seemingly very superfluous funding for an equestrian unit, equestrian training and supplies, or whether that's something that maybe, um, could be taken to the next level or adopted, such as looking at police pensions and wondering whether that funding actually goes towards legal fees versus taxpayer fees. Um, you know, I think that this is a real opportunity for Providence to, to put, you know, itself on the map and to take a stand and to do the right thing, and to really say that, you know, this is something that's not going to happen here, and that we do not accept, uh, police brutality, and that we are going to reallocate some of that funding that's going to the police force and maybe overfunded in this police force, and really put it towards things that really help our community and funds and initiatives and the programs that, um, that mean something to the people that actually live here. So, I'll, I'll end with, the system, you know, really, the police system, the police force was designed to operate in a way that it is, you know, is exactly, it's, it's doing exactly what it was designed for. Um, time to fundamentally, um, abolish it, rebuild it from the ground up, and understand what it means for the community and what Providence actually needs, um, to make itself better. Thank you.
You don't wanna listen to anybody, I don't know if you wanna- Thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. Ryan. So, um, I see that we no longer have any more hands up. There is no one, no more individuals who can speak at this time. Do I have any, uh, council members who wanna speak on the matter? Okay?
Nobody's saying anything.
So, at this time, there is no more hands up. I am now officially calling the public hearing at, um, City Council Committee on Fine Public Hearing concerning, on June nine, twenty twenty, concerning the budget. We're gonna officially call this, Mr. Clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, there are no more hands up. With that, I'm now hereby calling the public hearing adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's being adjourned.
Mr. Chair, I believe we're, we're seeing that they, they're meeting, and they were all done.
So, I believe that ma-